Mayor Steen.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Present.
Thank you. Enright.
Present.
King.
Oh, present.
I could say nay.
Yeah.
Austin.
May so.
We have a caller.
Present.
You never get to vote.
(laughing).
I vote I'm here.
Item number one is a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number two is a motion for approval of the minutes of March 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number three, are there any citizens present tonight that wish to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? If it's on the agenda, then we'll get to you. But if it's not on the agenda and you want to come up and address the council, this is your opportunity. We do this every week, every other week. Okay. Thank you. Item number four, under rewards and recognitions, we have the Human Rights Commission and Trish here. Trish, you want to, Daria.
Daria.
Daria, you want to tell us what we're celebrating or doing today?
Hello, I'm Daria Gemmell and I'm representing the Austin Human Rights Commission. And this is our 16th year of having an essay contest that is actually associated with a state-level essay contest. And it's open to all 6th, 7th, and 8th graders in the city of Austin. And this year, I am pleased to report that we received 60 submissions. And we have here our top three today. The commission members reviewed all of them and we all agreed on what the top three selections should be. And the top winner, who does not know who she is yet, will be, her essay will be forwarded on to the League of Minnesota Human Rights Commission for a statewide contest. So we want, I want to formally thank Mrs. Kristy Crewan and Mrs. Julie Walfsky from Ellis Middle School and Ms. Brolzma from Pacelli Catholic Schools, who were the teachers who encouraged these students to participate in the contest. So as a reward for winning, for ranking in the top three, all three of the contestants here to read their essays today will win, will receive $50 in chamber bucks. And all students who participated are actually receiving a certificate of participation. So before we move on to having the girls read their essays, I want to first read to you what their topic was. Jokes or comments are commonly made, both accidentally and intentionally, at the expense of certain groups of people. Some individuals and organized groups actively work to stop hurtful speech. Provide at least two examples of how language results in the violation of protection of human rights. And be sure to identify the message, who it is from, who it affects, and how it affects them. So the first student we're going to hear from today, who finished third place, is Ms. Victoria Hansen.
My essay is called "Words Will Always Hurt You." Many jokes and comments are usually what cause the violation of people's rights, and it happens in everyday life. But did you know that approximately 4,400 students commit suicide a year, because of bullying about their race, gender, or other things about them that people find odd? Author Nick Chef once wrote, "They say suicide is a permanent solution to a temporary problem, but the problem with being human isn't so temporary." In the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, section number two says, "Everyone can claim the following rights despite: a different sex, a different skin color, speaking a different language, thinking different things, believing in another religion, owning more or less, being born in another social group, or coming from a different country." So many people are treated differently because of their race or gender, and it's not fair. I mean, if I had dark skin, would people make fun of me? I would want people to know and like me for being me, not just looking at me and thinking I was a totally different person than I really am. Basically, I don't want someone to judge a book by its cover. I know people who do that at my school, making fun of people with accents, different skin colors, different cultures, different names that are hard to pronounce. And all the names and cuss words need to stop. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights also says in section one, "When children are born, they are free and should each other be treated in the same way. They have reason and conscience and should act towards one another in a friendly manner." But what never really happens is that exactly. But like Nick said, and like the pop star Christina Perry sang about, we're only human. We are not perfect and we have our faults. And there is nothing in the universe that can make us see or act differently. People are always cussing at each other, and sometimes it's just for fun, but sometimes they really do mean it. Over half of those people are kids, speaking or cussing at kids, and kids being kids, they can't really handle it. These two situations are really similar. In both words really bring you down, but you have to never let them. You know the old nursery rhyme saying, "Sticks and stones will break my bones, but words will never hurt me?" Well, that's a lie. Words will hurt you and they will break you, but only if you let them. I guess what I would like to say is, no matter what someone looks like, talks like, or whatever it is about them that is just a little odd to you, just get past it and look inside of them to see who they really are. Everyone in Minnesota has the same rights as the people in Iowa. Our whole nation has rights and we have to follow them. It is a privilege to live in our generation, in our time, and if we abuse that, our world will go down in flames. Just remember to treat others the way you want to be treated and to never judge a book by its cover.
Thank you, Ms. Victoria. That was wonderful. Our second-place winner this year is Ms. Isabel Maddock.
If someone came up to you and told you a discriminatory joke about your race or gender, would you take it lightly? Most people wouldn't. Jokes people make can be very hurtful to everyone. Most of the time, these so-called jokes violate our basic human rights. Examples of these violations pertain to both race and social status discrimination. When you are born, you are born free and deserve to be treated just like everyone else, no matter what race or social status that may be. That means that whoever you are, you deserve the same human rights as everyone else in the world. Just because you may look, think, or act different than someone else, you deserve the same rights as every other person in this world. Some people use race or status as the basis for discriminatory jokes, and what they don't realize is that it greatly affects people from different races and social statuses. When they are the targets of these jokes, it hurts their feelings because they can't help but be who they are. Whoever you are, you as a human being have the right to freely live your life with a feeling of freedom and safety. This means that whatever religion, gender, or skin color you are, you have the right to live a free life. Ignorant people don't realize this when they make mean jokes that discriminate against certain groups of people. These jokes can escalate and make people feel unsafe and confined while living their life. Human rights are not something to joke about. Whatever someone's religion, gender, or social statuses, you still need to treat them kindly and with respect. The next time you're making a joke about someone, actually think before saying it. These comments might seem harmless to you, but to certain groups of people, they're extremely offensive, so stop and think before you make that joke.
Thank you, Isabel. Great job. And our number one, our first place essay writer this year is Ms. Katie Liliman.
My essay is titled "Racial and Gender Inequality." I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. This quote from Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech highlights the conflict in today's society with racial and gender inequality. Jokes and comments concerning stereotypes and discrimination, whether intentional or non-intentional, are potentially violating basic human rights. Examples of these violations and others are found in racial and gender discrimination and stereotypes. Many do not realize the effect words can have on others. Whether good or bad, you can guarantee that someone you may not know will remember what you just said. These words can violate basic human rights, such as the right to equality concerning gender discrimination and stereotypes in the workplace. Over 29% of people reported sexual or gender discrimination in the workplace. This can prevent many people from pursuing their job careers due to harmful words in a previous workplace, or chasing their dreams because others have made them feel inferior. When an employer pays a man more than a woman in the same job, or won't consider a man for a job a woman would normally perform, it is violating the right to equality and is against the law. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights states that "When children are born, they are free and each should be treated in the same way. They have reason and conscience and should act towards one another in a friendly manner." This states that everyone deserves to be treated the same, and things such as stereotypes shouldn't get in the way. It doesn't just occur with gender discrimination either. It can happen with racial discrimination too. Whether someone is from Mexico, China, Africa, or anywhere else in the world, we are all the same species and we should treat each other like it. Many decide that African-Americans are not as good as white Americans, or they believe that all Chinese or Mexican people are illegal immigrants, which is not true. Even in the school district, there are racial discriminations and stereotypes. I know of cases even in my school where people make inappropriate jokes based on racial stereotypes and differences. It happens more frequently than people think and can be potentially harmful and violating human rights. And students aren't the only guilty party on this matter. According to an article written by Joy Resmovitz, "Public school students of color get more punishment and less access to veteran teachers than their white peers," according to surveys released by the U.S. Education Department that include data from every U.S. school district. Statistics show that black students are suspended or expelled at triple the rate of their white peers. According to the U.S. Education Department's 2011-12 Civil Rights Data Collection, 5% of white students were suspended annually compared to 16% of black students. Black girls were suspended at a rate of 12%, far greater than girls of other ethnicities and most categories of voice. This suggests that teachers and even administrators are discriminating about different races. This results in violations of human rights and needs to be put to a stop. As you can see, jokes and/or comments in the workplace, schools, and other places are violating human rights. Gender and racial discrimination and stereotypes are taking away our rights as a person that we are born with, and that shouldn't be tolerated. Whether young or old, male, female, black, white, or whatever color, we should treat each other like human beings, not like livestock or something less than human. Discrimination is against the law and should be treated like it.
In closing, I just want to remind the commission and the community that the mission statement of the Austin Human Rights Commission is to cultivate a just and inclusive community where diversity is valued and human rights are respected. And I am so grateful for the open minds and critical thinking of not only these three students, but many students across the district. It bodes well, I think, for our community, the state of Minnesota, and our entire nation when our young people are thinking like this. And I want to formally wish Katie luck in the state-level competition. And thank you all for taking time to hear us. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd also like to recognize that we have some Boy Scouts here today. Their leader, you want to tell us where you're from and what you're doing here?
We are Troop 109, Pac 109, from Austin. We meet at Westminster Presbyterian Church every Monday night. And we are here to earn, our boys are here to earn their merit badge for citizenship. And we're here to watch local government in action.
Excellent. Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
That was the first uniform I ever wore with, well, actually Cub Scout, but I was a Boy Scout for a number of years. It was very instructive, good step to citizenship. Okay, with that, we go to the consent agenda. We need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six, under bids and awards, receiving bids for Riverside Arena improvements. Mr. Lang.
We received bids on May, excuse me, March 5, 2015, for our equipment upgrades at Riverside Arena. We spoke about this at the previous work session regarding the bidding process and how we had broken down the bids. With the bids, we received three bidders on the project. We had a base bid that included dehumidification and HVAC system, chiller pumps, fluid cooler, concrete floor, and piping. And with the base bid numbers, Hardy Mechanical was the apparent low bidder at $1,663,000. The next two bidders actually tied with their base bid at $1,995,000. We also reviewed different alternates that we had as part of the project. Alternate number one was for building automation. Hardy's bid for building automation was $24,800. Alternate number two was a new boiler system, which Hardy had bid, and I'm just referring to Hardy because they were the low base bidder by a considerable amount. Their alternate number two boiler bid was $129,000. Alternate number three, which is ductwork replacement, Hardy had bid that at $63,900. And alternate number, we deleted alternate number four. And alternate number five was rooftop HVAC unit over the east side office area, and Hardy's bid for that was $28,420. In looking at the bids, it would be our recommendation that we recommend the base bid to Hardy Mechanical as well as alternate number one, for a total amount of $1,687,800. Also detailed there in your memo is some costs incurred with HGA for design services. And also, we're anticipating some construction services for special inspections throughout, and shop drawings throughout the course of the construction project. We have also incorporated contingency of 4.8%, which is, I would say, on the low side, but we will work within that as we get into the project. A lot of times, with a rehab project such as this, you run into some issues, some unforeseen things, just as part of the project. In adding all those numbers up, when looking at the base bid, alternate number one, and those existing services along with the contingency, we're looking at a $1,800,000 project. Next table shown there for you shows what we talked about earlier, where we have $1.4 million set aside for this project with CIP fund balance, Hormel Foundation grant, and a Mighty Ducks grant. So the remaining $400,000, we would propose a $100,000 Hormel Foundation grant that we would apply for in 2016. Could actually be received from them in December of 2015. And then, general fund allocation of $300,000. Those two added together would make up the remaining balance, bringing us up to the $1.8 million amount based on our recommendation of base bid and alternate number one. I've detailed the alternates and what they include, and if you have any questions about why alternate number one versus some of the other alternates, we can get into that a little bit more if you so choose, or if you have any specific questions. But again, our recommendation would be to award the project to Hardy Mechanical with the base bid and alternate number one.
Counsel, any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number seven, under public hearings, is a public hearing requested by Tobias Wilking to appeal the designation of the dog Colt as a potentially dangerous dog. Mr. Oversteem.
Yes, Your Honor. Following an incident that occurred on February 18, 2015, wherein a dog owned by Tobias Wilking did bite a mail carrier named Michael Chavez, Mr. Wilking was served with a notice designating his dog Colt as a potentially dangerous dog. Just to advise the council, this is different than designating the dog as a dangerous dog, which in some cases may lead to the destruction of the dog. There are no consequences with regard to the designation of a dog as potentially dangerous other than if the dog bites again, that would automatically lead to his designation as a dangerous dog. Mr. Wilking did file an appeal with the city of Austin. While there is no provision in the section of the ordinance dealing with dangerous animals regarding an appeal, there is, under our administrative code, an opportunity for people to appeal administrative action taken by staff of the city, and in this case, that's what Mr. Wilking is doing. To outline the procedure, I'm going to have Officer James Dugan come to the podium, and I will question him. Is Mr. Wilking here? Okay. Mr. Wilking, why don't you come up front here so you have a...
And after I've questioned Officer Dugan, Mr. Wilking, of course, would have the opportunity to ask him any questions he may have. He also has the opportunity to offer any testimony, evidence that he so desires, and any exhibits he so desires. The purpose of this hearing is whether to determine whether or not the designation of Colt as a dangerous dog should be, excuse me, a potentially dangerous dog should be affirmed, or it should be overturned. With that, Officer Dugan, I understand that you are a community service officer and are also designated as the animal control officer for the city of Austin. Correct. And how long have you served in that capacity? Be 15 years. Okay. Officer Dugan, I understand that this incident occurred February 18, 2015. How did you become involved in investigating this matter? The incident was reported to the police department through dispatch. They dispatched me to the urgent care for an animal bite. Okay. And upon arrival at the hospital, did you have an opportunity to visit with Michael Chavez, the victim of the dog bite? Yes, I did. And did you also have an opportunity to observe the wounds that Mr. Chavez incurred by reason of the dog bite? Yes, I did. And how, generally, how would you describe those wounds? Well, from what he told me, he was making a delivery to the neighbor, and the bite was caused from a delivery address near Mr. Chavez, near British calf. So Mr. Chavez was delivering mail to a residence that was adjacent to or several houses away from Mr. Wilking's house? Next door neighbor. Next door. Okay. And did he describe how the dog attack occurred? From what Mr. Chavez says, he was over there delivering the mail, and he heard something coming up behind him, and he saw the dog. He tried to avoid the dog, and apparently got faster than him and bit him in the calf of his leg. And at that point in time, did he observe what happened to the dog? He said, to my understanding, the dog was called back to the house. Called back to Mr. Wilking's house? Correct. Did he observe the dog enter the house? That's where, yes, that's how he got, that's how we were able to establish the address. Subsequent to the date of February 18, 2015, did an officer, I believe it was Mr. Life, Officer Ryan Life, on February 26, 2015, about eight days after the incident, did take a picture of the wound suffered by Mr. Chavez. Is that correct? Yes, on his left calf. Is this the picture taken by? Officer Life, yes. This is eight days after it occurred, but it's the general location of the wound and the, that you observed. Okay? We would make part of the record this photograph? Yeah. Members of the council, the city clerk, we're going to make part of the record the Austin Police Department incident report that was prepared by Officer Dugan. Subsequent to your investigation of this incident, did you go to Mr. Wilking's residence? Yesterday. And you talked to him about this incident? I didn't talk to him immediately. I talked to, I didn't get the name, apparently I thought I had, but a female was at the door and she was at the door. So that, at the time of the incident, he was not at home? He was not at home. Okay. But later, you did go and visit with Mr. Wilking? Yes, I did, correct. And you provided him the notice, and served upon him the notice of the designation of his dog Colt as a potentially dangerous dog. Is that correct? That is correct. And that acknowledgement, a receipt of that, was signed by Mr. Wilking on that date? Same date, yes. Is this the copy of the notice that you provided to Mr. Wilking? And in classifying the animal as a potentially dangerous dog, you have checked a couple of requirements, or at least indications. First, that the animal has bitten a human or domestic animal on public or private property. And number two, the animal is engaged in unprovoked attacks, causing injury otherwise threatening the safety of humans or domestic animals. Do you feel this incident is consistent with those allegations? Yes, I do. Again, we'd make this notice as part of the record, please. Officer Dugan, in your opinion, after taking into consideration your 15 years of service and experience as a community service officer, and as the animal control officer, is it your opinion that this incident with the dog Colt is sufficient to designate the dog Colt as a potentially dangerous dog? Yes, I do. Okay. Do you have any more questions, Mr. Wilking?
I do. When speaking with the mail carrier, did the mail carrier by any chance state that he may have spooked or scared the animal?
No, he did not. He was, he was making a delivery next door to your residence, and he was surprised by the dog coming up behind him. And that he never? Never said that the dog was... That he may have startled him. No, sir. I don't believe we have any more evidence to offer at this time. Again, what I would ask the council is that they conduct a vote determining that Colt, as a result of this incident, should be designated as a dangerous, a potentially dangerous dog, and that the designation by the animal control officer should be affirmed, and that the, directing the city attorney to prepare proposed findings in an order, which will be presented to the council at their next meeting.
Mr. Wilking, did you have to, did you want to address the council on this?
I did.
Okay. Go ahead, why don't you come up and... Why don't you come up and...
First thing we're talking about is a dog that's no more than three feet tall. It's a basset.
What kind of dog is it?
It's a basset, cross, black shepherd. The mother was a basset. He's more basset than anything. Upon, after the incident happened, I had spoken with the mail carrier just to see what happened. And he had stated to himself, to me, that he had walked up to my next door neighbor delivering mail, and that he stepped back. My dog, he had said, he had stated that he heard my dog. He barks, and he makes it known for everyone in the whole block that he's there. He's never had, in the time that I've had him, he has never had an incident with the dog prior to this incident. He said that he came and was stepping back from dropping the mail off the step, and that he may have startled him. Well, if he had startled him, that would have been the provocation. Unintentional or not, he was startled. That was the natural defense. I'm not condoning what he does. And, you know, I felt, and I, you know, I feel bad that he did get bit. And I told the mail carrier that, you know, that there was a cost that he had incurred, that I would take care of that. To put a label of potentially dangerous animal on this dog has a greater effect than what people think. I take the dog down to the dog park. Several people that are involved in the city council and whatnot bring their dogs down there. They will look at that dog differently and remove their dogs from the park just for the fact because of one-time supposed incident. And then, if it's ever labeled with it, potentially dangerous animal, then to be able to bring that dog down there, they won't, people won't allow me in there because of that label. There's never been an incident down there, but people have their own mindset. The other thing is, is that I have been taking care of a two-year-old child, and in doing so, or applying for the county assistance to help the mother take, or offset that, that will be looked unfavorable because of that label. This is a dog that the two-year-old grew up with, since it was a puppy. I have the mother of the two-year-old here, and is going to attest to that. There's never been a provocation. There's never been any danger to this, you know, for this animal to be labeled that. Does it bark? Yes. And, you know, it does get excited, but it is, you know, it is a harmless animal. You know, it did bite someone. But I believe, and after talking with the mail carrier, that it was possibly to the point of a dog, that it was a provocation. He was startled, and that was the act of being startled. It bit. It was a one bite. It didn't continue going after and, you know, aggressively biting the person. It bit to scare, you know, to stop him from the action he was doing, and he fled. I was at the door when it happened. As soon as I saw him, and it happened, I called. He came home. He came, you know, over the little pathway into the yard, up to the door, and he sat there barking, and that was the end of it. Had I known that he, you know, that there was skin actually broken, I would have, you know, done more, you know, at the time until, but I wasn't notified until later that afternoon that, of the incident. I ask that, you know, this potentially dangerous animal not be granted.
I have a couple of questions for you. How old is your dog?
The dog is turned a year old on Halloween, so a year and a half.
So, it's a puppy.
Yes.
Was it running loose, or did, I mean, does it normally run loose? Do you have a yard you keep it in, on a leash, or what's the situation?
Okay. I let it out. It does, it stays, you know, I don't have a leash to it. We have a training collar to it, that it does have its, you know, boundaries that it knows. Our next door neighbor, since I've had him, she's an elderly lady. She comes over, or walks across, you know, walks, and he's been out, and so he goes, kind of goes over to her yard and, you know, because when she comes out, he'll greet her, and she'll pet him, and, you know, kind of give him a treat every so often. So, the boundaries between my yard and her yard kind of get vague for him, but he doesn't, you know, tear off down, you know, across the streets and whatnot. It's, he stays very close to my house.
Okay. And as far as the dog park, I don't know. Holly, do you know if we have any regulations on potentially dangerous dogs as far as going to the dog park? I know you're instrumental in the dog park. I don't think there's anything, Mr. Holstein, you know, if that's the case? Are they banned from the dog park?
We have a list of rules that are at the entrance of the dog park. I couldn't tell you what they are off the top of my head. I don't recall seeing that on there, I guess, but, you know, being prudent or cautious, I think if there was an incident after you had that kind of...
Designation.
Designation, you may be looking at a greater liability, but I don't know. I guess I would maybe...
I mean, I take my dog to the dog park.
And that's...
I don't think that would be a huge thing. I mean, they look at the dogs. I don't think they'd even know anything about your dog, although we have had several dogs killed at the dog park by other dogs, so it's certainly concerned.
And that's where, you know, there's never been an incident at the park, but people themselves will be more cautious if they know that that is a potentially dangerous, or, you know...
That may be the case. I don't know. I mean, speaking for myself, I don't, I don't know that that would necessarily be the case, but, you know, I can only speak for myself. And I will tell you, I mean, on basically all the hearings we've had on this type of thing, there are always a single incident. I mean, just similar to this, where, you know, basically, they're good dogs around the family. If they weren't, you know, they would have been, come to our attention a lot, well, you know. But it's usually one-time thing, and potentially dangerous dog, I mean, if your dog doesn't bite anybody else, I don't really think there's much ramifications for you. I would take, you know, I would take some kind of measures, no matter what we do today as far as, you know, I mean, you can get these, I'm in a rental house. My normal yard is fenced in, but I have stakes that screw into the ground, and I already have them out this year. I had two dogs this weekend, I have my daughters, and they're both tied up to stakes. When I'm out, sometimes they run a little loose, but not unless I'm outside, and then they're with me. So, that's something I would do regardless of what happens here, because now you know your dog could potentially go after and startle. I mean, who's to say it doesn't get startled again?
Yep.
That's the problem. Counsel, any questions?
Stephen has one thing. You know, sitting up here on council, this is always something that we have to separate the emotion from the fact on, and this council, I know, has put down, or made the motion to put down dogs. This isn't the situation for Colt. But still, I understand that you're tied to your pet like most are, but I sit up here on behalf of the citizens and say, your dog bit somebody. And whether you think it was startled, I don't think that's really defense. What happens if you, the two-year-old in the house, startles the dog? I think you'd be sad about that. So, I oftentimes, in my own mind, have to separate fact from emotion. So, to me, the facts are, you bit the dog. We have these ordinances in place for such instances, and I know it doesn't reach the level of being put down, but there's still steps that need to be taken for this, just to protect the citizen. So, I would, in my head, I need to vote that we affirm the decision to have this dog deemed a potentially dangerous dog.
Anybody else? Anything else, Mr. Wilking?
No.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, you need to either affirm, or...
Yeah, make the motion that we affirm that Colt be deemed a potentially dangerous dog.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's see, this is a...
Motion.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Then we need to move for the city attorney to prepare the proper findings in order. Make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. Next, number eight is a public hearing on street involvement on street improvement assessment for 19th Avenue Southwest, 12th Street to 16th Street and 16th Street Southwest, 19th Avenue to 22nd Avenue, Project 2A15. The amount to be assessed is $175,921.88 at 4.7% interest for 15 years. Mr. Lang?
For both item number eight and number nine, I'll combine them into just one short presentation here. We had public informational meetings back on February 11th. We also had an improvement hearing on February 17th, where presentations were given to council and to the public. And now, tonight, we have the final assessment hearing as part of our whole street reconstruction project phasing. And in this case, with this project and the next one, we have payment options for the amounts you have indicated there, that those are total amounts to be assessed, but the individual property owners have all been notified of their individual street assessment amount, as well as their sidewalk assessment amount as well. And with that, we have four payment options. Option number one would be to pay the amount in full by October 30th, 2015, without any interest. Option number two is they could pay at least 50% of the amount by October 30th, and the remainder would go on their taxes, spread out over 15 years with interest. Option number three is they could do nothing when they receive that final bill in the fall, and it would automatically go on their taxes, again, spread out over 15 years with interest. Or option number four is if they meet certain age and income guidelines, they could choose to have the amount deferred on their taxes until such time that the property is sold. We have individual assessment rates per foot of frontage, so everyone's assessment is likely a little bit different based on their frontage of their lot, or if they have a corner lot, we also have a corner lot policy. But our street assessment rate is $42.75 per foot, and we also have a cost for sidewalk, which vary depending on the panel size, could be in the range of about $110 per panel for a five-by-five sidewalk panel. And if they happen to have any that need to be replaced in their driveway section, those are poured a little bit thicker. Those are about $140 per panel. And if they choose to have it put on their taxes, it is spread out over, again, 15 years at an interest rate of 4.75%. So, that information would apply to both item number eight on the agenda and also item number nine.
Are there any written objections?
We have not received any written objections.
Okay. We need a motion to adjourn and continue the hearing on these properties for which we're...oh, there are now, okay. Okay, we need a, counsel, do you have anything? This is a public hearing, so if the public have anything, anybody here want to address the council on this project? Either one of these, eight or nine. Okay? If not, we need a resolution declaring the cost.
Wait, there is a gentleman, sir.
Oh, there is. Oh, come on up, sir. Give us your name and your concerns.
My name is Don Rush.
And your address?
1912 12th Avenue Northeast. I don't live anyplace over there, but I have a relative that does. I know that that's, this has been a bad deal all the way through. It happened to me two different times, but these people, I think, need a little help, and the council should try and find a way to help those homeowners over there out.
Well, one of the things we're talking about right now, what we're trying to get the state to do is do street improvement districts where these things could, isn't this what we're talking about, Stephen? One of the things we address the state on, hoping to spread costs like this out a little bit more. Would this affect, would this be affected by the street improvement districts?
Yeah, it's a street improvement district, and we're also looking for just additional funds toward local roadways. We wouldn't be able to apply it to this particular project, because it'll be something that we're, it's a long-term plan, something for in the future, but we are looking for other options. There are just limited options out there right now.
I think we recognize...
That's what I'm talking about. You're going to get something on down the road. It's not going to do them any good.
But we recognize this problem, and we're trying to address it as best we can right now at the state level. Right now, the only other thing we could do is have other people pay for theirs, and we've never done that in the past, and we've talked about it once, and it got shot down real quick. Citizens were not interested in doing that.
Take a shot at it.
What's that?
Take a shot at it, see if any other people in Austin want to help them out a little bit.
We did take a shot at it, but, what was it, three, four years ago, and we caught heck from the citizens. They were not interested in doing that.
I don't know. I paid for it twice. I'd be willing to give them some money.
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to address the council on this? If not, we need a resolution declaring the cost.
So moved the resolution.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. We now need a resolution adopting the assessment rule.
So moved the resolution.
Is there, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number nine is a series of resolutions, public hearing on street improvement assessment for South Crane Edition 7A09, 12th Avenue Northeast, 8th Street to DOT Trunkback Railroad, 10th Avenue Northeast, 8th Street to 10th Street and 10th Street Northeast, 10th Avenue, 12th Avenue, Project 7A09. The amount to be assessed is $177,191.28 at 4.75% interest for 15 years. Mr. Lang, do you have anything to add to this one?
No, I do not.
Is there anybody that, here that wishes to address the council on this project? It's a public hearing. Counsel, do you have anything? Are there any written objections?
No.
Okay. With that, we need a motion to declare, or a resolution declaring the cost.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, or, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. We need a second resolution adopting the assessment rule.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 10, still under public hearing, is a public hearing for variance request from Jeffrey and David Hunn, 70236 Drive Southwest. Holly, this looks like yours.
Yes, at the March 10, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, which was continued from February, the Planning Commission reviewed a request from Jeffrey and David Hunn for approximate 17-foot variance between his manufactured home and a garage located on the property at the mobile home park that he rents. The ordinance that we, that applies to this requires a 20-foot separation between manufactured homes each other and between other buildings. The variance was requested after we had had some, many, many contacts with Mr. Hunn, after we became aware that there was an unpermitted building in the manufactured home park that he had placed there and that he had added on to. By the time we worked with him for some time, it became clear that he did not wish to move the garage, and that that wasn't really an option for him. At least, that's how he felt from a financial standpoint. The Planning Commission spent about an hour and a half in discussion on various aspects of this issue. They came up with a recommendation for the council recommending that the variance be approved by a vote of eight in favor and one opposed, and that was our full planning commission. The recommendation came with the findings of the Planning Commission, that the requested variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, that the variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the locality in which the property is situated, that there are circumstances unique to the property. which the property is situated, that there are circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner, that the landowner intends to use the land in a reasonable manner not permitted by the ordinance. And then they added the condition that the structure could not be used for business purposes, which was the original reason why Mr. Hunn placed a larger garage in that area. And I'll just point out on this, this aerial photograph shows a smaller structure here and a larger structure here. This structure was actually, this one was removed, this one was moved back to the back of the property, and then a larger garage was placed here. And with those two larger structures, Mr. Hunn is over the lot coverage maximum, so he has agreed to remove this back garage that he, so which would be this one. And he's asking that he be allowed to keep the larger garage in that place, but be allowed to use it for permitted uses, not use it for his business. I guess there were a number of complicating factors in this instance. There were other unpermitted structures out in the manufactured home park. There were also a few permitted structures that were also close or not in compliance with these, the twenty-foot setback. That was something that the Planning Commission took into account in making the analysis for the variance. There were also a number of people who appeared at the meeting in support of Mr. Hunn. I did receive a couple of phone calls that were not in support, that felt that he should have to follow the ordinances as, as does everyone else in the city, and that he should not be granted the variance. One of the concerns that we would have going forward is that there would be additional unpermitted structures, and that people would just come back and ask for permission after they had already put up the structure. We had now changed our policy. In the past, we were allowing renters from the Mobile Home Park to make applications for permits for permanent structures. Now we are not allowing that, we're just taking applications from the property owner, the park owner, and he has agreed that that is the correct process that should be followed. He also understands in this instance that he would be responsible for the compliance of this particular structure, and he has given approval to Mr. Hunn to move forward with the variance process as the actual landowner. If the city council chooses to approve the requested variance, I would ask that you consider the location of the structure, the permanence of the structure, the purpose of the Mobile Home Park, which you're looking at low-cost residential living, the purpose of the building separation, the health, safety, and density. In this instance, we're looking more at density and ability to move the structures in and out of the Mobile Home Park. Our building department has indicated that they can make the garage safe from that distance that is currently, that it's currently at. I would also ask that the, the smaller garage be removed by a certain date, and that the business use cease immediately, that the remaining garage meet all building code requirements, and that if the council believes that the, or decides that the recommendation should be granted, the council would take the following into account, that variances shall only be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance, and the petitioner establishes that there, there are practical difficulties in complying with the ordinance, and that practical difficulties mean that the landowner, one, would like to use the property in a reasonable manner that is prohibited by the ordinance, two, that the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the landowner, three, that the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. And then just for your note, economic considerations alone do not constitute an undue hardship if there is a reasonable use of the property under the terms of the ordinance. And then, as I had kind of alluded to, conditions can be imposed on the variance, but they must be directly related to and bear rough proportionality to the impact created by the variance.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Questions? Mr. Hunn, are you satisfied with this? I know you've worked quite a bit with Holly trying to get this resolution, is this acceptable?
Yeah, yes, I turned around and I told Holly that I have gotten rid of the business. I asked her about it before, if I could go ahead and take the business and give it to my son, and I could be just a driver, he could be the owner and a driver, and I would just be a driver here, and I put in for a shuttle license and everything else here, which they have, have never done before.
What kind of business is it?
It's a shuttle business. I take hormonal people from Austin, their residents, up to the airport, and then from the airport back to their residents. And I also do the blood runs for the hospital here. I pick up blood or samples of blood, take it to the cities, or I pick it up in the cities and bring it, or Rochester, or Albert Lee and stuff. So I've turned the business over like she asked to him, and everything else, I've done everything I can with her and stuff, what that she wants done, so I'm doing. And I was never informed that I, by Craig Hoyam or anybody else there, that when I went to show this detail of, which I got over here, of what I wanted to do with the garage, and everybody said it was all right to do it. But anyway, I was never informed about it, couldn't have a business out there by anybody. So it's a law I never knew anything about, so, the way it goes, so...
We're glad you could reach some kind of resolution. We're glad you could work with Holly.
Yes, I am working with Holly as much as I can, yes. And then another thing is, she thought I had too many vehicles out there, and I, I only have four, and that's why I built the garage, so I got an older truck and everything else and stuff all in it, so I have no other, I have no two vehicles even sitting outside, only have one, and the rest are in the garage or off the premises whatsoever. And I, like I say, I'm giving up the business out there, I don't have a business there, I'm working with Holly as best I can, and everything she's asked to, I did, you know, so. Council will pretty soon probably have a new deal coming in here about a shuttle license, to grant me a shuttle license, but I'm working with her all the way. These laws, I didn't know, nobody even informed me about them, so...
It happens.
Yeah, things happen like that, you bet.
Your Honor, if I may just speak, just to, as a, as a, just as a, I guess, a friendly warning to people that, and advice that Mr. Hunn could have been on the same page with us if he would have come in and gotten his permit, and if he realized that Mr. Hoyam had left, that he certainly could have come in and been a little bit better about communicating, I think, if, I don't know if you'll admit that that's true, but I, I think we would have been much better off if we had been able to review what he had early on in the process and gone through the permit process like we do with most people, and that's how we become aware of issues and problems that may crop up.
Yes, when I went and showed the, Craig Hoyam and Ron there, what I wanted to do and stuff, they said fine to go ahead and do it, and Ron was, Craig was supposed to come out and go ahead and go with me on that deal and stuff, but I guess he never showed up, and next thing I know, he retired, so it was kind of a bad deal.
I'd make the motion that we approve the variance.
Second.
I'd like to ask a question, Holly had asked about a date to have the garage moved by, is there a specific date that is reasonable for that, or we should include in this, or...
I guess the weather's nice enough now, I think that it wouldn't take, I don't know, I think that I would, I would ask for a month if it could be removed within thirty days.
That's not acceptable?
Now, we're talking about the small garage, but we're keeping the big garage, is that what I'm under the understanding of?
That we're talking about?
Yeah, that's correct. The one that had existed there that was moved to the back of the lot.
Yes, I will maybe move it in a month.
Okay, it's a public hearing, if anybody else wants to say anything, although I don't see any problem with this passing, so... Okay, Steve had a motion, second by...
Jeff.
Jeff? What are we looking at here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Mr. Dankert, want to take a roll?
Motion by Councilmember King, seconded by Councilmember Austin to approve of the variance request, so an aye vote is in favor of such.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Nay.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes six-one, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number eleven, under petitions and requests is consideration of the adoption of the second-hand smoke e-cigarette ordinance. I think I could explain this a little bit, this came up at the last meeting. This started out about a year ago, where the city had passed a moratorium, wasn't it?
Yes.
On, on the e-cigarettes. At the time, it was anticipated that there was a very good chance the state might do something, and the state really has kind of dropped the ball on this, so what they're asking for is that the moratorium turn into an ordinance, and at the last meeting, the vote was four-three in favor. It has to be unanimous the first time. This is the second time, I know we have a number of people that wish to address the council on this tonight. Bonnie, who's going to be your spokesman? You?
Do you want us to address the council?
I don't know, you know, we, I think we've heard about everything.
But Dave wasn't here before.
Dave wasn't here, but Dave is, you know, I don't know, Dave, do you want to hear anything on it?
No, I think I know what she has to say.
Okay.
Well, there's a whole group of people.
We have, there's...
Everybody stand up who's here from the Drug Task Force, or if you're in favor of passing the ordinance, stand up. If you're against it, raise your hand. Okay. You know what, let's have, let's let the people who are against it talk. Do you wish to address the council?
I would rather hear both sides.
Okay.
Let's just take the vote.
Okay, I mean, what's that, I can't hear you, ma'am.
She's for it.
Yes.
She's for the ban.
Oh, you're for the ban or against it?
They're for the ban.
Oh, you're for the ban, well then we don't have anybody against it. Okay, Steve, you had a motion?
I'd have a motion to make the moratorium into an ordinance banning the e-cigarettes.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, all in, let's see, motion, this is for preparation of the ordinance, motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Tom?
Motion by Councilmember... King, seconded by Councilmember Large Anderson to approve the preparation of an ordinance, and aye vote is in favor of such.
Councilmember Jordal.
Nay.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Nay.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Nay.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes four-three, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. And now we need a ordinance for adoption of the publication of the ordinance, this is an ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Nay.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Nay.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Nay.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes four-three, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, I want to thank the task force for showing up and for the work you've done on this, taking it this far. Thank you very much. Item number twelve is a motion approving a policy and agreement for city employees that are also paid-on-call firefighters.
You can update the policy that when city employees also work as paid-on-call firefighters.
Okay.
In an agreement between the, the city and the employee.
Counsel, you got any questions, comments?
This is what we discussed last week, right?
Correct.
Okay, and we need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Rule thirteen is a motion authorizing the one thousand five hundred dollars from the contingency fund for joint membership with the DCA and the Greater Minnesota Partnership. Any questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fourteen is a resolution approving a resolution in support of local street funding. I think we just talked about this a little bit, any questions on this?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Fifteen is a motion approving city data policies, and you finally get to say something.
With these updated policies, we are just making sure that all of our data compliance policies are up to date for statute, and just adopting the form, so when people do request data, we have standardized forms for that. So we have a series of policies that I would request that you pass.
Questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Sixteen is a motion approving the sale of various parking wreck equipment. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to put these items that are listed on your papers at a next auction coming up, so I'm not sure exactly what kind of money we're going to get out of some of them, but the park board has requested that we bring it forward.
Questions, comments? Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seventeen is a motion appointing Ivan Pollock to the Austin Sustainability Task Force, term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eighteen is a motion setting a public hearing for April twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, for the annual Stormwater Public Informational Meeting. We don't want to miss that one. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nineteen is a resolution accepting gifts to the city, we do this every two weeks, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?[1556.26] Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twenty is a resolution in support of local government aid, I think everybody would be in support of this.
So moved.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twenty-one is a resolution imposing the imposition of levy limits, Mr. Dankert, I think this is kind of a no-brainer, but go ahead.
Sure, evidently, there's some review at the state level under the current tax bill to look at imposing levy limits on municipalities again. We've had several years where levy limits are in place and several years where they're not. From the standpoint of municipalities and the elected body, the imposition of levy limits[1503.17]